Okay, just for the record tonight, Russell Hock is the Acting Planning Board Chairman for the evening. Per the Planning Board Chair, Yehuda Friedland.
Thank you Suzanne. So I would like to call the the Villas Ayrmont Planning Board meeting to order. Today's Thursday, February 24th at 7:03 PM.
Okay. Do the Pledge of Legions?
Yep. I stand for the bunch.
Pledge of Legions.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna do the roll call. Member Grinberger?
Yeah.
Member Roth?
Yeah.
Ad hoc member Friedman?
Yeah.
And Acting Chairman Russell Hock?
Yeah.
For the record, Eve Van Cuso sent a memo in. She is not going to be on this evening.
Okay.
And Russell?
So I think the first order of business would be to appoint ad hoc member Maurice Friedman as a voting member for tonight's proceedings.
Okay.
Do we make a motion for that? Or do we just state it for the record?
You have the authority as Acting Chairman to appoint them.
Okay. So that's tough.
Yes.
Okay. So go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Okay, so then the next point of business would be to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the special planning board meeting held on Tuesday, 15th, February 2022.
On second.
All in Maurice, you can't vote because you weren't in it. You weren't in attendance. You can't vote. So do I have it all in favor? Maurice, did you read them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
All right, so motion carries and Friedman abstain.
Okay. So if I got this right, the next on the agenda would be the well, it was supposed to be the continued public hearing for the Steel Building Center, Yeshiva Eight's time. We requested an adjournment to the March 24th Planning Board meeting. So I'd need, so I'd like to make a motion to, what would, what's the language to adjourn them to that meeting?
Correct.
Well. Um. Let's see, um.
Don't we have to say either via Zoom or at 7:00 PM or in person?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not my question. My question is whether or not we have to open it in order to continue it.
Oh, we usually do. You're correct.
So a motion to op- open the continued public hearing with regard to Yeshiva Eight's Chaim, also known as the Skill Building. Does someone want to make that motion?
Sorry, I can make that motion.
Okay.
Somebody second. I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Now, the motion is to?
Well, for the record, the applicant through their representative requested that the continued public hearing, which was to occur or it is occurring right now, be continued to the March 24th, 22 meeting of the Planning Board seven or 7:30.
Is it going to be a Zoom meeting?
We don't know.
Right now, the Zoom meetings are only continued to March 16th. They could extend it, but we probably won't know until that date. So we have to state both for the record.
So then we would say seven o'clock if Zoom, 7:30 if in person, sorry.
At Village Hall. You're correct.
I think, I think that's the way it should be worded. Yes.
Okay.
Sorry for the phone in the background. So I would make that motion. Do I need to repeat that?
No, I got it. I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you two more? Okay.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So then following the same process, I would like to make a motion to open the continued public hearing for 10 South Devon LLC.
I'll second.
All favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Here too, we've received a request from the applicant or the representative to adjourn this continued public hearing from tonight to March 24th, 2022. At under the same provisos, seven for Zoom, 7:30 in person.
Okay, so they did request the 24th then?
Yes, I thought I forwarded the email. I didn't get it till yesterday. I apologize.
Oh, maybe. I'm just looking at the minutes. I mean, the agenda. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Not continue.
Oh, sorry, to continue the public hearing for 10 South.
Actually, to be probably even more grammatically correct, to continue the continued public hearing.
All right, let's continue the continued public hearing for 10 South Devon LLC to the March 24th Planning Board meeting to be held at 7:00 PM via Zoom or 7:30 if it's in person at the Ayrmont Village Hall.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
I'll do me a second.
A second, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. Maurice, you second that?
Yep, I'm in.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Okay. So then, getting hang of this, I'd like to open the continued public hearing for Stage Street Associates located at 124 Route 59.
Second. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hock, members of the board. My name is Paul Baum. I represent Stage Street Associates, the applicant. As I explained at the last meeting, we had started this process in 2019. We had met with the board, I think, twice. We went to the zoning board of appeals. We have attained variances for our project, which consists of about 5,600 square feet of warehouse space with 400 square feet of accessory office space, eight parking spaces, and three loading bays. Why were before the zoning board of appeals, the plan was revised? We reduced the rear building and made it a little smaller. So we created a 25-foot buffer and a 25-foot setback to the rear yard that backs the Indian Rock Townhouse development. We've also screened that area with dense landscaping. In granting the variances, the zoning board overrode a disapproval that was issued by the county planning department pursuant to GML review. As part of this application, in this latest submission, we've revised our plan, which is revised as of February 11th. And we've addressed all the various comments from the review agencies such as the sewer district, the Department of Health, DOT, Tolman Fire Department, Ramco DPW, as well as responding to the comments that were made by the villagers' planning and engineering consultants. We've also submitted to you a response to the GML disapproval to the Planning Board of June 26, 2019, which was very similar to the recommendation that they made to the zoning board of appeals. We've also submitted a response to the Part Two SECP reform that was prepared by Nelson Pope for his no impacts were found to be significant and the negative declaration was recommended for the project. We're requesting two small waivers, I should say, from this board. One is for parking stall length. We're requesting that it be reduced from the required 19 feet to 18 feet. And we're also requesting a reduction on the size of the loading berth from 40 feet to 18 feet. This is a small warehouse operation. No big trucks are anticipated to be used and we're limiting the size of trucks that may enter the site to 18 feet nose to tail. And we put a note on the plan as was recommended by the planning consultant. So I guess we're here tonight to continue the board's review and we're requesting that the board, one issue a negative declaration, grant us the small waivers on the parking parking stall length and loading berth. And we request that you override the disapproval from the Rockland County Department of Planning and grant us the special permit and the site plan approval. So I'm here with Rachel Buree, the engineer. And we're available to answer any questions of the board with regard to the plans and address any other comments.
I'm it's, and for the, I did resend out the revised plans as we discussed the last meeting to Rockland County Planning, but I did not receive the GML yet because it did, the, the meeting date was after, it was the 27th and it went out either the 28th or the 31st in the mail, but I didn't receive it yet for the record.
And less less than 30 days, that was.
Yes, because the meeting was the 27th and this meeting was the 24th. So there was less than 30. And they're pretty much right on the market, 30.
Right. So you want to revise your requested list of approvals that you're seeking tonight, Mr. Baum?
Well, if, if we're if it's been sent to the county and they're doing a new review, I guess we're gonna have to wait for their comments before the board can take final action with regard to the application. But we would, we would like to get some of the other items out of the way if we can, at least with regard to the SECP and rendering a negative declaration and with regard to our waiver requests. As well as address any other comments that the board members had.
Okay. Are there any other comments from your side for the project engineer?
Rachel, you have anything you want to add?
I think we've covered it all in the past, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And then we, you know, I think, as you said, we submitted a revised response to the EAF. Everything was small, to small, possible. The only one that had changed really was the historic, the one about the historic or archaeological, but we have the letter from Shippo that there was no impact. So that one takes care of that issue. But otherwise, I think everything is the same as before. So if there's questions, I can answer.
Should we go to the board members first for comment? Or should we go to the the village professionals?
I, I think my recommendation would be to go to the professionals. So that the board has a full flavor before they start asking questions.
Okay.
Or even go to the public, whichever you prefer.
Okay. Why don't we go then to the village engineer, Valerie?
Valerie, it's actually a letter from, from Eve. She's not on tonight.
Oh, sorry.
But she sent in a letter. Suzanne, can I bother you to read it?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dan. I was muted. What did you say?
Eve's letter. Can you read it into the record?
It's dated February 23rd, 2022. They've completed the review of the resubmission. Comments follows. One relief is being sought for parking stall size nine feet times 19 feet required, nine feet times 18 feet proposed. Relief is being sought for loading berth size 10 feet by 40 feet required, 14 feet by 18 feet proposed. Will the sign, this number three, will the sign be two-sided and illuminated? As it is currently oriented, the sign doesn't appear to be easily visible from the road if a vehicle is traveling easterly. Number four, the applicant noted in their October 15th, 2021 first response letter that the traffic engineer provided information regarding sightline. The sightline is not on the New York State DOT plan as noticed in the response narrative. This shall be added. Number five, the proposed stormwater system indicates a flared end section overflow to the north of the property immediately adjacent to the property line. The exiting drainage patterns shall be maintained. No increase in runoff shall be directed towards the property to the north. Number six, a stormwater maintenance agreement will be required. Number seven, floor elevations have been provided, but the EDA access path is not clearly shown. Entry doors to the warehouse shall be shown. Number eight, a guardrail proposed along the top of the wall has now been added to the plans. And lastly, number nine, proposed sidewalk has now been across the full property frontage. Sincerely, Eve Van Cuso, Booker Engineering.
Okay, Valerie, next.
Yeah, so I just had a few things, actually very minor things. I think there were still some issues with like, I believe my memo just had a couple of comments. Dealing more with process. Again, seeker, I think, I think we discussed tonight that I provided the board a part two EAF. The applicant also provided some additional details of that for the environmental topics identified in the part two EAF. So I think at this point that it is recommended that the planning board issue a negative declaration for this project. And then I just noted that item 17 per, this was the prior GML review. So if there is, if it's the same GML review as prior and they keep the same comments, there might be one or two items that need to be overridden. And then the applicant actually dealt with all our outstanding site plan comments and they have been addressed at this point in time.
Thank you. Anything from Lou? I have no additional comments at this time.
Um, we did get a letter from the Tolman Fire Department. Just looking forward in my packet. I think everything was straightforward as I recall. Why don't I have it at my fingertips?
Is this the February 22nd?
Yes. Do you have it in front of you? You know why? I brought my stand package on and all the papers are sticking together.
Sure. Do you want me to read it?
Yeah, if you could.
Please.
Okay. So it's a letter from the Tolman Fire Department dated February 22nd, 2022, addressed to the planning board. Your chairman and members, the Tolman Fire Department has reviewed the narrative letter dated February 15th, 2022. The supplement narrative letter dated June 26th, 2019, and revised plans dated February 11th, 2022, prepared by Civil Tech Engineering and Surveying PC. We repeat our earlier comments that the buildings should, buildings should be sprinkled. Separate fire alarm systems should be provided for building A and building B to avoid any confusion as to which building in the complex is the source of an alarm. In the event that a single alarm system meets code requirements, shuts such system should be designed to specify the building from which the alarm has been transmitted. We acknowledge that our concerns regarding the fire apparatus turnaround have been satisfactorily addressed. We repeat our request that a public hydrant should be authorized by the village of Ayrmont to be located on the north side of Route 59, adjacent to the prop- proposed driveway to 130 Route 59. Very truly yours, Thomas R. Stevens, Jr., Chief.
Okay.
Mr. Baum, do you want to respond? To that letter?
Yeah, no, we have, we have no problem. We said that whatever, whatever the code requires with regard to the sprinkling, we're more than happy to do. I believe the plans called for the installation of a hydrant on the north side as the fire department had suggested. Rachel, you want to weigh in on that one?
Um, I think that that was more, they were gonna do the hydrant at 1:30 near that one because they're already gonna have they were, so it was looking to put it on that side over by that one because there, we do have a hydrant directly across the street from this property. So it would be on that side by like, I believe it was by 1:30.
Right, and that was their comment, to put it adjacent to 1:30.
Yeah, I believe it was in last month's letter.
Yeah.
You had commented on that.
Right, so we have no problem with that. And we recognize that they have allowed the turnaround. They found that adequate. So we, we don't have any objections.
Okay.
So should we?
I just, I, I just want to point out the way that the paragraph with regard to the sprinkler system reads. I interpret as regardless of whether it's required under the New York State Fire Code that you install a system that they want you to install that system.
I think that regardless, we were just going with the, we were presenting it as we would comply with whatever the building code required. If the building code requires a high, a sprinkler system, then we would comply with the regulations.
Right, but I, I, all I'm pointing out is that it sounds like your position, I'm not arguing with it, but I'm pointing out, it sounds like your position is if it's required, you're putting it in. If it's under the New York State Fire Code. If it's not required, you're not putting it. Is that an accurate analysis?
Well, I think that would be our position. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But in reading his letter, Mr. Stevens, it doesn't refer to the New York State Building and Fire Code. It just says separate fire systems should be provided for building A and B to avoid any confusion as to which building in the complex is the source of an alarm. While he first starts off with, we repeat our earlier comments that the buildings should be sprinkled. Sorry, I left out the most important sentence. Separate fire system should be provided for building, buildings A and B to avoid any confusion as to which building in its complex is the source of an alarm. In the event of a single alarm system, in the event that a single alarm system meets code requirements, but that's only in relation to the type of system that you, you would be using, not the requirement that you even install the system. Such system should be designed to specify the building from which the alarms have been, has been, should be, have been transmitted. I have vague recollection of one or two applications where we had similar issues come up. Where Tolman took the position, well, we've reviewed these plans and from our perspective health, safety, and welfare being primary, we think that the building ought to be sprinkled. The applicant or applicants, as the case may be, I think responded similarly to the way you responded. If we have to do it under the New York State Fire Code, we'll do it. End of sentence. And then approvals were granted. And then it came time to deal with the issuance of building permits. Or even earlier when CDRC was reviewing. And one of the things that came up was, hey, Tolman wanted sprinklers. Where are the sprinklers? Or I think we had one where they did sprinkler it, but they didn't put it in the proper stairwells. I mean, doing this from memory, guys. I, I don't want to see that happen here if you get an approval. And history repeats itself. That's not gonna help anyone.
Well, I know Mr. Turco met with the, the fire department. So I thought that was understood. I mean, our, my, listen, my feeling is this is, this is a building code issue. There hasn't been anything with regard to this application that indicates based upon the location of these buildings and the use of these buildings that you know, there's going to be a hindrance to firefighting such that additional sprinkling of the buildings is warranted over and above whatever the New York State Code requires. But if Mr. Turco is here, maybe he can weigh in on this subject. Because I, again, I believe he did meet with the fire department and did speak to the chief with regard to this.
Excuse me, may I bring something up? I think this is a discussion to be had between the fire inspector and the fire department. Based on the load or whatever is going to be put in those warehouses, whether it's cardboard, paper, materials, the fire load is going to demand whether or not the sprinkler is, is required or requested by the AHJ. The building that Dan was referencing was 365. They required a stand pipe. Tolman asked for a stand pipe that wasn't put in until after the building was constructed. So it added substantial expense to the construction of the building. It wasn't required by code because the building didn't have enough stories, but based on the distance from the street and the hose length, they, the Tolman Fire Department requested stand pipe. So the AHJ, we made a point of pushing the stand pipe and they did install the stand pipe after the fact. So I'm just suggesting that maybe the Tolman Fire Department and the fire inspector should have a discussion about the size of the warehouses and the possible fire load and the distance from the firehouse and the ability to get in and out of the lot and weigh those things against whether or not you should put in a sprinkler system.
That's, that sounds like a very good suggestion, Lou. And if, based upon their review, if they require that the buildings be sprinkled, then we'll have no choice but to sprinkle the buildings, even if the code doesn't require. So we're, we're not looking to skirt any, any fire protection laws or we just will comply with whatever is needed with regard to the construction of this building.
Thank you. So should.
So should we open it up to the public then, as this is a public hearing?
Yes, do we have a motion?
I would make a motion to open the.
Hold on, we already did that, didn't we?
Public part?
No, we already open, we can open the continued public hearing.
Okay, yeah.
So we don't have to make a separate motion to uh open the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
For the public, okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Susan.
I was just gonna say, if anyone from the public would like to speak, if they could raise their hand, uh I'll call on them. Okay, the first person I see, for the record, if you could please state your name and address, and everyone has three minutes to speak. Uh Danielle Meehan.
Hi, thank you. Um I'm Danielle Meehan. I live at eighteen Ackerman Avenue um in Armont. Does this property need an ESA waiver? It, is it in sewer district one? Is that only for existing sewer systems? Hello?
I. Paul, I don't think so, but I don't wanna answer for you.
I'm not aware of it requiring any sort of ESA waivers for.
Okay, just all a sewer district one is in an ESA waiver. Area, but I, does it, Dan, do you know the answer to that question? Is it only for existing sewers? And they're changing them, or is it for new ones too?
Uh I, I do not know the answer, however. They had two other projects approved right next door, or. I think there may have been a couple of uh lot separation with one of them. Um or both, but uh were ESA waivers required for those projects, Mr. Baum?
I'm not aware of it, Rachel.
I haven't heard of anything and the sewer district offered a review and they have no mention of it, so. They did, the sewer district has performed a review on this site, so.
Okay, I think it's for existing sewers and changes to them. When it's applicable, but I just wasn't sure.
We're not upgrading the sewer mean, it's only a connection.
Okay, okay, thank you, okay. Um. I liked with the making a negative declaration on the secret, I just wanna point out that. Um there's been uh other recent projects where um negative declarations have been made and are having. Projects have been started and have had a profound negative impact on the surrounding environment and neighbors. So before that is made, I think people, everyone here, you have a huge obligation to residents. Your water quality, please think long and hard before you make a negative declaration. Um because what is going on um on the hillside area is criminal and is affecting everyone's water quality. We already have. A chemical in the water that's above allowed um. Standards called PFAS, it's causes um birth defects, miscarriages, it can cause cancer, all right? Um it, it's a little scary and this, there's a lot of water in this back, this back area of this property. Um the other thing is um, I am speaking on behalf of coupon Armont, I think this traffic study is flawed. It states that uh there's no, um it's not gonna be affecting the infrastructure. Making a left out of um State Street before this is being put in is almost impossible. Um and there is gridlock several times a day. Um and adding more traffic, I think, is going to make a bad situation worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I don't see any other uh hands raised, Chairman.
Okay. So then the, um so are there any comments or questions from the board members?
Everything seems straightforward for me.
Okay, thank you.
I have no comment, everything looks whatever, as long as they follow according to the safety, even though. Like when we mentioned regarding the sprinklers. If it's gonna enhance the safety of the building and everything and they follow it. I mean, that was, that, that's only my only concern. Other than that, I think everything looks straightforward.
Same here, um the question is, are we going to close the public hearing at this meeting? Because we're gonna have to wait to get the GML back, is that correct?
You.
Correct. Close it.
Miss Mortichai. Kudos to you, you are a very quick learner. Very quick learner. Member uh Mortichai is absolutely correct. Cannot close and accept um additional information after you've closed the public hearing. The GML is kind of important.
So we leave the, the. Continue public hearing open.
Right, but you can vote on the negative declaration tonight if you'd like. And if you, you know, and clearly there's still the GML, but I can always draft a resolution for next month for your consideration. If this board is, you know, fine with the waivers that are being requested. And you clearly will be doing, you'll be voting on a neg deck tonight, so we're really getting close to the end of this particular application.
So I think if I understood correctly, tonight we can. We can vote on the negative declaration. Would it make sense to?
You have to, can, no matter what, you'd have to continue the public hearing also.
Okay, so should we just get that out of, do that now, I mean? Uh, are you saying we have to have a separate motion to continue the public hearing and then? Uh deal with the.
I'd vote first, right, Dan, and then have a second public hearing.
Yeah, I, while you're in the public hearing. You can vote on your seeker determination.
Okay.
And then follow that up with separate motion to continue the public hearing. Oh boy, is. March twenty, what, fourth?
March twenty fourth.
Going to be a fun evening and morning.
You got it.
Okay, so uh does anyone, does anyone wanna make a motion? Declaring uh. Pursuant to seeker that uh the application of one twenty four Route fifty nine. Will not have a significant impact on the environment. And thus uh you're adopting a negative declaration.
Well, based on the information I've looked at, I, I, I'll make that motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any of those? Mortichai?
No.
Okay.
So my next question, I guess, is do we deal with the waivers after the GML comes in? Would that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So then I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing. For State Street Associates, one twenty four Route fifty nine to the March twenty fourth. Uh planning board meeting to be held at uh seven PM if it's remote or seven thirty PM if it's in person at Armont Village Hall.
I'll second.
All in favor? I.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you next month.
Very good, thank you.
Good night.
I will need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, do we, do we do new business first, or?
Um, the only new business I can tell you is we have a packed agenda. We have the skill building that you just continued, we have ten South DeBonne, that's continued. Uh we have this application that's continued and we have a, a new application for the Air Montual. At sixteen Murray, so that's uh for, for an addition of a, a MCFU to the property, to the, for an amended site plan. So it will be a full evening.
We haven't seen any information on that one, right?
No, um I just received that submission, so you haven't received that yet.
A question to Dan, when will we know if it's going to be the Zoom or in person?
Probably the sixteenth, right?
Okay. I, I have like sources that I rely on in different. Uh areas of the government uh. Uh and organizations. And this week alone. Now, this was last week. Uh I was told. We think this is it. It's not gonna be extended, uh that was by an organization that I rely on. But then I also have people connected to the seventh floor. And they're telling me that. Something is cooking. In terms of uh. Possible legislation to make it permanent.
What do you mean, to make remote meetings a permanent option? Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Bad idea.
I. And that's the first time. That these. Two different entities. Gave opposite answers to me.
Is that a bad?
In the past, I don't know what to make of it. They were both pretty adamant. In their positions. Or, or their understandings.
Yes, time will tell.
And. Yeah, uh. If I were a betting man. I think we're gonna uh. Be back to um uh in person.
Hope so too.
All right. So then um I can make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yes, please, I need someone to second it and then.
I'll second.
Okay.
Favor? Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Everybody, good night.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Russell, you did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.
One and done.
Thank you, Morris, okay.
Night.
Russell and Mortichai.